And a number of others. But I do not see where these laws or the sanction for non-compliance is being enforced. The biggest people or the biggest culprits for non-compliance in the northwest province which lead to fires. Our government departments, state-owned enterprises and municipalities. If you then don't apply the law and you can't enforce it because they say they're supposed to be consultative governance and one department doesn't want to fight with another department, this act with the new sanctions that we've put in will be totally worthless. I've got two more points, Mr. Chairman. You have two seconds. Okay, the first one, please align the fines with inflation so that you don't just say it's a 5 million or a 10 million rand fine, but in 10 years' time or in 20 years' time, it's not worth a lot of money. Make sure that it is aligned to inflation, that it's got an automatic 10% per annum increase so that the sanction value stays the same. The last point is when I look at the act and I went through it at home and I went through it here again, I see most references made to the minister this, the MEC that, to government, but I don't see where the community is involved in the actual implementation. Unless we bring this act down to the people on the ground who must implement it, the people who are actually polluting, the people who are actually creating the climate change and making them part of the solution, we'll be wasting our time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to advise you to say thank you.
Let me say a greeting to our parliamentary members, the chairperson and everybody here present in the name of our Lord Jesus, amen. Leader, my name is Sina Mutobi. And then I'm coming from ward 20 in Bissisflé. I do support this bill on climate change. And then this is because of the following reasons. Some of us have never had any understanding as to what was referred to by climate change. In some places we would just go off and fishing without actually being aware of any regulations related to that. But now that we are under discussion of climate change, we believe this is going to educate us as to exactly what is this whole thing all about. And then some would go off fishing actually without being licensed for that. So the climate change bill is going to educate us to follow the laws. And some of us within our surroundings used to pick up an axe and start axing and cutting off the trees without knowing they are usefulness in the community. And not even knowing that some trees are actually very important with regard to climate change, to climate itself. And some of us have been just walking around, smoking and then will just throw out... And the caravans, yes, and then we will just throw it off onto some grass and then it will catch fire and obviously by so doing contribute to the problem of climate change. So we never knew about these things, but now we are seeming to becoming careful of these facts. And then sometimes what some of us have done is to actually bin some clothes and some shoes and by so doing polluteing the air without realizing that we are contributing to climate change problems. And some of us actually have been severely affected by climate change because we have experienced so many floods. I saw this problem when I went to Diel Pan where they experienced a severe flood. In fact, what happened is that people were homeless and they were actually put into quite a number of halls. They didn't even have a place to sleep when I went there to see for myself. And then so now that we have climate change discussion, this is going to ready us so that in the future we can stay ready for any changes that could actually happen, for example like floods etc. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Dumelang?
Good afternoon.
I was going to say a greeting to the honourable chair, but I can see he's walked out.
And I would like to greet honourable members.
And also my greetings to ladies and gentlemen. My name is Olani Makanda. So I'm an instructor in the northwest... Northwest Umbrella Fire Protection Association. I do support the bill. For the reason, simple reason, that I work with fire. Because fire is what causes climate change in our country. So with this bill... I would like our members of parliament... For people working in transit and farmers in the areas where we are. I know that they have their separate constitution that deals with fire. So I would really like this climate change bill to be somehow merged with their constitution when it comes to matters related to fire.
Because if they are combined, at least but we can participate to prevent felled fire.
Could have been combined in that way so it will be possible for the people to participate when it comes to preventing felled fires. Because when there's fire... So fire and rain, both of them causes soil erosion.
Next, I get to... Already my chairman spoke most of the words.
Okay, the next point that I wanted to raise, I shall not touch on because my chairman has already alluded to it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, honourable members. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen.
So I'm an instructor in the northwest umbrella fire protection association. Last week I went to Hanyessa for six days. I went there to train the people because they have been very much concerned about fires. And then when we got there, we found that there was no water at all, farms have burnt down. And then we tried to train some people and we managed to train about 250 people. So what is said about this whole thing is that people are struggling while we ourselves are there. I do agree with the bill and I support it. But the question is, is it going to be able to help us in our struggles? And then I heard one of the gentlemen here complaining about a joblessness. If the government will be able to train the people and actually open opportunities for jobs. And then we can talk to the governmental people so that they can start to make fire bridges along their ways wherever because that is where actually fires begin. And we tried to speak when we were in parliament last time, but here it seems to spring back to us again. We are talking about the same thing. And so we were actually trying to propose that if we can work together to make sure that people have water and they can have some jobs because these people are struggling and here we are ready to help. Imagine us going to teach people about fire, but they don't have water. What are they going to do when there is a fire break out and there is no water? Which simply means that what we're teaching them is going to be of no use. There are farmers in Hanyessa, there are people who have livestock and grazing lands. When they burn up, it means it's the end of everything. Let me say my greetings to the leadership. And then my name is Bushipule. I'm from Signal Hill and that is ward number 28. It's only one question that I would like to pose. So I just want to know what should really happen in our town which is so dirty when we have the PWP waking and the municipalities waking, what exactly should happen? So up with another proposal that could actually keep our town as clean as we used to have it. Thank you.
I would like to start by saying my gratitudes to the chairperson, honourable members and my comrades from the ANC. Chairperson, I'm making a humble plea that next time when you come to conduct such public hearings, to please workshop our people about the impact of climate change because I have noted or realized that they do not understand the scarcity of water.
Adapting, consequences protecting peoples, homes, business, livelihoods, infrastructure and natural ecosystem, it covers current impacts. People are experiencing climate change in diverse ways. It affects our health, ability to grow, food, housing, safety and work. Some of us are already vulnerable. Many people think climate change mainly means warmer temperature, but temperatures rise is only beginning of the story. Because the earth system is where everything connected. Changes in one area can influence changes in all other areas. Climate impacts such as people living in small island developing states. Climate impacts such as people living in small island developing states.
And my name is Kellezo Molifeh, thank you very much. Greetings to leadership. My name is Opanyana Mousi. Briefly, I support this bill and I have been wondering about the impacts of climate change because in winter I find myself wearing short pants and vest and in summer I will get cold, those are the impacts of climate change. Honourable Mr. Kamine, I encourage adult people to plant trees. Because I also planted three in my school. I can even challenge you and say you can go to Sunisoff at Akisanam Primary. I remember in around 96, we planted trees in Sunisoff. If people from my area are here, they can attest to that we planted those trees and I was also present when we planted those trees. I am therefore making a proposal to the leadership so that to come up with initiatives of planting trees in our communities. We can start in the schools, clinics and churches. And in our streets next to our homes. Sometimes in summer when it is very hot. When you are under the tree, you feel that breeze. Yeah, I would like to emphasize that we encourage our communities to plant trees in their yard and another challenge we have is that where I come from, we do not have fire stations which can assist us in terms of in case of danger. Thank you very much. Greetings, honourable members, the chairperson and honourable mayor. Honourable mayor, as I'm here, I went awalt from the field. Because we share the same sentiment.
This bill, I support 100%.
We support this bill 100%. My name is Obaken Sidiko, I'm a disaster management officer. Here at Mafiken Local Municipality. Chairperson, as we support this bill... Honourable mayor, last week we targeted Matzatzing. Working together with the fire department of the Mafiken Local Municipality. Our wish is that people don't see the work that we do as disaster management. If it was possible that we go to other subregions and other municipalities. But the jurisdiction does not allow us. You will never see us in the office. Houses, they get burnt. People start felled fires. We encounter a lot of incidents even where we find water, underground water coming to the surface.
I'm not here to make an awareness. Brooksby, the mayor was there.
It started at Brookby, the mayor was there. He did not have his tie on, but he had his boots on.
Today, I'm proud to say we will never experience floods of Brookby.
Because we have done our job. This bill is going to assist us because we are managed by Provincial Disaster Management Team. They give us weather reports, weather reports updates daily. As workers, we refer such information to Communications Unit for them to inform the public.
Disaster Mafiken Local Municipality is here, is alive. Our centre is activated 24/7.
Eh, eh, ro, ro na le fa palaro na la disaster management lo na, le ten, la ce la, eh, bilalidira tiro ya ro na, busi kule motsehar.
Kata se mo sabosa, we are busy making awarenesses.
Eh, with regards to eh the, 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 the weather, eh the situation of the weather, we are also, we are always alert.
Chairperson, deregi sajana, ko hakiela awareness eh, ne kito koli blela, fela kore, we support the bill as disaster management team of Mafikiya, the center is activated, kiala bo.
Eh, in the interest of time, Chairperson, I'm not here to, I'm not here to eh, to educate the public, but I'm here just to say we support the bill, thank you.
Eh, dumela ba kaitu.
Eh, greetings, honorable members.
Lina lakaki, Khomozo.
My name is Khomozo Ramashila Bela.
Ki tsabalé kubuwa, kore na, ki di rang, me fe la, ki mutu nyana fe la.
Eh, I am afraid to speak, but I'm.
Before I could even say anything more or less, we all need to understand what is this climate change thing that is being discussed here.
Eh, bili, eh, rega tswa ela, retsuanetsa kore, kosa kubutlo kwa tata kore, re kalo kani, kore ge ing, taba eh lo, kore ribisa na kaya na khumpie no.
Climate change refers to long-term shifts in temperature and weather patterns, as I was browsing through the document, eh there are words that I came across and they actually raised my brows in a good way though.
Eh, peto koe, ya luapi, ona evolela ka ho fetoka, ha luapi, mona ko, eh, telele, ha maya mo abosa, kance ke, nse ke, 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 batli si samo, eh, kileka kra ze dinza di tla.
Even though it is our own responsibility as a community at large, each and every being on earth must be held liable for taking care of the environment, mother nature.
Eh, le ilu kore eh, ke, maikarabelo aro na, eh, mosi chabe, motu kamung, le fasika bo para, retsuanetsa kore, aroale maikarabelo, akore re koko mele tacho.
But it's actually great to see the government trying to find a strategy and also people liable or responsible for this matter at hand, I've seen MECs being mentioned in here, ministers, mayors, presidential commission, as those whom will be responsible for certain unforeseen nature events that may occur in the future in terms of climate change.
Eh, ke eh, eh, nklata kore eh, rabona, kamkoe elen kating, mo, nklanya hunkiwa ha maikarabelo, ki di teuze fapaning za, za puso, eh, le ba e teripe, le ba ro na, kore, re akonore, re mikamika, ne li di kamoraho zeu, za peto koya luapi.
Eh, batsona beso, it is also our responsibility to work hand in hand with the government to help reduce the greenhouse effects by minimizing, me lo ya matlakala, mi siya di kolu ita kale, let's reduce things, let's reuse things like plastics, let's take care of our landscaping instead of kufisa di tla ha, let's recycle inside, instead of kufisa di pemasi, let's decompose instead of kohlala, la, tla la matlakala, mo me bilen, we are talking eh about the health of our next generation for them to work in an effective, healthy environment.
Eh, ke, say, say, ke, kera tan kusbuwa kohore, eh, re le si chaba, mo, mo, motu kamung, onale, maikarabelo aho, akore, re sadira, di lo say lo kore, eh, di, kolo na le di kamoraho zeu, sing sing ke, eh, mo, eh, mo tabense za luapi, eh, kera ta, eh, kapan kha eh unwe, ke taba eh ya kore, rifise tla ha, le kore, rifise matlakala, zeu ke, say dinza di lo say lo kore, eh, di baka, eh, di kamoraho, ze sa siya mang, mo peto kong ya, ya climate cap, ko kozalona luapi, ke, di lo say lo kore, ke, ki di ra bui kuelo, mosi chabe in kore, ba le mo kedi kate sonan le zeu, ka kore, ke sona say lo kore, dirba kela matata aho, eh lo kore, re ba le, le fe lo, le lo kore, kala pe pa fa.
I'd also like to request the commi, the committee in front to also engage with other departments like agriculture, tourism, and mostly health, because ribua kama pelo abatu.
Ke yata kape, kore, ke ruet, ke ruetweze, committee, kore, i, dirisa ne le di teuze dinza puso, kotswanale, ma fa pa apuso, koba ne mo ribua kama ce lo abatu, mosi chabi.
Let it be your mandate to come with at least opportunities when trying to reduce the bad effects of climate change, let it be leaderships, internships, or permanent jobs, it will also assist in decreasing the unemployment rate around the province as a whole, as you have seen a young man crying for just a mere job opportunity, by doing so, you would be igniting the energy of our people to take care of their environment.
Eh, se ke su kopan kape, ke kore, eh, yakaba etapeli, le ribulele ndichu, no, eh, re akonore, re credit, leaderships, re akonore, ri chute kadi tiro, kore le ro na, re akonore, re ke karolo, ka kore, kamkoe elen kating, eh, rebone, akonale, o si bui, se sing sing lo kore, wile afeleza alamo, ke kabakala eh, di kwetu, se chwanan le zeu, eh, ne ricope la kore, eh, de, na ne uli, kamkoe len kating, le tele di chuno za kore, za di tiro.
I'm going to actually talk about Mafikiya because we are here now, Mafikiya is made up of rural areas, kudi kwa, who illegal mining, there's also recycling organization just right next to our healthcare facility, so you can just imagine the mess, in result, we suffer consequences of rape, bohodu, as, early earthquakes, acid rains, health complications of our people, and other nature disasters, find a way to assist us in having the control of climate change in our hands, in all being said that, I support the bill, thank you.
Eh, ke yata kore, ke, ke buwe, nklaya kore, eh, akonale, di kwetu, se, di le dinzi tota, eh, kera ta kore, re, lebelle di kate sonan le zeu, kore, re akonore, re mikamika, ne le, le bu e mo bo ta, kai lo kore, mo la utumo, o, how to kudi risiwa, kone le di chuno, kore, re akonore, re toka fazza matula aro.
Eh, dumela bom malebora.
Eh, greetings, ladies and gentlemen.
Ki biduwa Mpo Makoloma Aqua.
My name is Mpo Makoloma Aqua.
Ki motu nyana hela, ki ANC Women's League activist in the province northwest.
Eh, na ke, ke, karakela, eh, di tu kelo, za bo, me, mo ANC Women's League, mo profencing eh.
Eh, I support the bill.
Eh, na ke, taka mo la uo.
Eh, mo kose diunze, nka di bua, anko kore, mo local government electioneers, ja mo koe oner, kila ranale seko, ranale le kawa, ne executive mayor, ya, mirila, tao kila, ro, ro le slogan, esese ren, ratama Fiki.
Eh, what I would like to say is that during the last local municipality elections eh we were privileged to have a young mayor and when he came into office, he came with a slogan which says eh, love Mafikiya.
Eh, ononzu kila hela, kasa, na kore, kaka kareso hela majoro, o, 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 ononzu kavara this climate change, kine ki poza kore, hanzo ratama Fiki, so, ha, kinsiki du, kinsiki tamale, me ma so po se, kiri rotwele tata, ke, ke, kinsiki tamale, ne kohotje, ke beraka le, ne so, kiri rotwele tata, ka climate change, eh, ne yankama tata, because, di ozo, sa le di di ra kala moraho.
Eh, thank you very much eh because you have educated us eh a lot eh with that eh slogan of eh love Mafikiya because it also encompasses eh climate change, eh we, I have been working together with you and others and eh we have learned so much from you.
Ka jaloo, ki tutweze lo mo kro na, eh, bilen, ki tuto, baba mbaro na ritu kile, because, mona ko ye fitlen, re sa itu, no ka bolela, kisene kadi tama, na kua no, kana kuela Brooksbilly, ba tuwaksoa in, ba ka testa, ka di na inti, su ko moraho kwa, kila kashwa ba tu, most of, baba un, eh, bilen, baba un, ba mo kudumha di wulche, kanti ne le climate change, ba kholu ne, ba tla kora bar, eh eh, hu, 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 du kile, eh, un ko mo la, konkwa, re, so, re, bo mama, ba utu se, eh, so, re rotwele tata, eh, re impress de tata, ya, no, kiala kore, sanse ruku, ke di ka ushu ro ti bohe.
Eh, it was so inspiring eh to, to learn eh, Honorable Mayor eh because eh most of the people eh there was this misperceptions eh when there are disasters to say that eh something is going out of the water eh but eh with your leadership, you, you taught us the impact of eh climate change and that climate change is very much with us, we thank you for that because eh now as the community, we are aware about the impacts of climate change.
Ya, no, koto ke kha hela, tchara kano, because I'm aware right now, kore, akonale, for amo from the presidency, eh, eh, puso eh integrated, te koyakotla, se kore, kose unwe di nala, so that ba tu waro na ba kono kutis, kore, ka kore, ke how akonale di fine ya no.
Eh, now what we need is that we need all hands on deck eh because I've heard that there are various structures from presidential commission eh provincial and eh, eh, local eh municipality commissions and eh I think that since we have all these structures, we must all work together.
Ki amo kela, bilika, tla se pe di, kiala bo.
I support the bill, thank you very much.
Eh, dumela, kamoga, eh, kalibito ke ke Khadimang Mauto, ke Khadimang Mauto.
My name is Khadimang Mauto.
Ke Khadimang.
Ke Khadimang Mauto.